Sorry, my mic was off. So, morning, everyone. Welcome to March seventeenth County Council meeting. And call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Broad, seconded by Counsel St. Pierre, that the meeting of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All those in favor? It's carried. Adoption of the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel St. Pierre, seconded by Counsel Dencham, that Council approve the agenda.
All those in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. It's carried. Any disclosures concerning interest? Seeing none. Minutes for February eighteenth?
Moved by Counsel Dencham, seconded by Counsel St. Pierre, that the minutes of the meeting, including the in-camera minutes of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, held February eighteenth, 2025, be adopted as circulated.
Any errors or missions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's carried. No delegations. We're on to number six. Action requests. Transportation adoption. Ben is already at the front. Mr. Dahan, welcome.
It's moved by Counsel Laundrie, seconded by Counsel Broad, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry endorse the March twenty twenty-five update to Transportation Services' salt management plan.
All right, go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. I'll be very brief on this one. We had a good chat during our January meeting about the update to the salt management plan. No real changes beyond what we talked about at the January meeting. It has been circulated to the local conservation authorities. They, we got, we did some back and forth, but nothing that actually changed the context of our content in the update. And so we'll leave it with Council to approve it. I think our next step would be to put it up on our website, just so it's available for public, the public to view. But other than that, that's, I think, the, the update for now. And perhaps next term at Council, we'll look at a more comprehensive update at some point.
Thank you. Anybody comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's carried. And we're on to tenders and quotations. The hot mix tender award, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Dencham, seconded by Counsel Laundrie, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the joint tender from Cornwall Gravel Company Limited for hot mix paving and other related works at their unit prices totaling seven million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars plus HST. The joint tender includes the following: the United Counties of SDG, six million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, forty dollars; the township of South Glengarry, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars; and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
Go ahead, Mr. Dahan.
Thank you. And I've got Mr. Grant here, Dana, joining me for this and the next report, if there's any questions from Council. But relatively straightforward, this is our annual hot mix tender. We do have another tender that will be closing for the April meeting, which includes some other municipalities, and that one is for paving in other locations across SD and G, where we've bundled a bunch of municipalities together. For Council's information, just in the financial piece, we are under budget. Not a lot of room to spare, but we have enough. So budgeting was, was done well. And we do have a provisional item in this contract, as well as our cold-in-place contract. In the event that we see markets start to really go out of whack, we'd come back to Council, recommend removing that provisional item and including it next year. But as it stands right now, based on the tendered prices, we're in good shape to get everything done this year.
Thank you. Comments, questions? I guess we're gonna vote. All those in favor? That's carried. It's nice when they're able to budget, and it doesn't scare us too much. The budgeting comes in where we thought. Go ahead, micro-surfacing, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel St. Pierre, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the tender from Dunkor Enterprises for micro-surfacing on various SDG counties' roads at their unit prices totaling four hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars plus HST, and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this tender forms part of the county's annual preventative maintenance program. Micro is a cost-effective application that seals coarse aggregate loss, seals up some cracks, and just allows for the existing structure to not oxidize as quickly, which gives us more, more life out of that structure. So we've received two submissions, both Dunkor and Miller. This is typical, the submission. The primary reason for that is that these two contractors are specialized in micro-surfacing, which they do most of the work in this area. So as far as, as noted in the financial analysis, there are no surprises here. We, we are recommending award, and we are within budget.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's everyone. It's passed. Carried. Thank you. Twenty twenty-five truck purchases, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Broad, seconded by Counsel Dencham, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry award the tender for the purchase of two three-quarter ton trucks to Miller Hughes Ford for the total tender price of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, eighty-one dollars and ten cents plus HST, and that Council award the joint tender for the purchase of three half-ton trucks to Finch Chevrolet Cadillac Buick GMC Limited for the total tender price of one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars and two dollars, with SDG County's portion totaling one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus HST, and that the manager of operations be authorized to sign all documents to give effect to the purchases.
Go ahead.
Morning, Council. As mentioned in the resolution, in front of you is a request to award two tenders as part of our equipment replacement schedule, as presented during budget time. This is for two three-quarter ton trucks for the county, as well as two extended cab pickup trucks for the county. And the other noted in the resolution is for one truck for South Stormont, who was a participant in a joint tender on this equipment. Not included in this report, but also just to give you an update on our equipment replacement, that the rest that was budgeted this year. There was also two other trucks that went out at this time, came in under budget of seventy-five hundred dollars. We've got a trailer left to purchase. Our furlough mowers are currently out, and our plow, which was budgeted previously in the year. So when it's all said and done at the end of the year, we're looking like we should have about a fifty thousand dollar surplus in our equipment purchasing budget. If there's any questions on those tenders, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, now we got some. I'll start with Mr. McDonald, and then Counsel Broad and Counsel McGillis.
Actually, not about this in general, but just talking about truck purchases is, you know, we had a little issue on the weekend, and what was the damage, and where are we going with that?
As of right now, all three have been removed from our site here, and we're waiting to hear back from our insurance. But they're working with the adjuster to come through. We're obviously able to tell one was a complete loss, speculating on the other two. So we'll have to see what the adjuster comes back with as far as that, and we'll work through that process there. We do have, as we, as we dispose of our surplus fleet, there are some trucks that we could maybe save for a later sale if we're looking at delays in delivery times or whatnot. So it won't, that won't impact our operations, but we will be working with the insurance to get those replaced as quickly as possible.
Just a subsequent.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And the two, the other two were also our vehicles as well? So it's three of our vehicles?
Correct. It was three county-owned pickup trucks that were parked side by side.
I knew we should have parked them one. Forget it. Thank you.
Counsel Broad?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Just on all three last topics, I got a good news that we're coming in under budget. The budgeting process is working. And I know we commented last time about competitive bidding, and there seem to be lots of competitive bids. Obviously, things in twenty twenty-five are moving on pricing, and I'd like us to, you know, definitely be thinking about all the savings we're incurring, and our budgeting is to hold them, as we don't, you know, know where things may follow up later in the year. So it's a good idea for us to stand pat on what we budgeted, and let's keep those savings just in our pocket as we move along.
Thank you. Counsel McGillis?
Thank you, Warden. I was just on table two there for the half-ton pickup trucks. I was just wondering, was that all the dealers that put in a tender? Because, you know, there's Ford and Dodge and other companies. They didn't show any interest?
I believe there was, there was interest from one Ford bidder, because there was the, the four tenders going on at the same time. I believe there may be a non-compliant bid listing missing here from the Ford. The model they submitted didn't meet our spec. And then the Ford is listed on table one, so they, they were a bidder on both of those tenders.
Thank, any, Counsel Laundrie?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. As far as the, the truck purchase, I'm pretty sure you usually identified, but was there dialogues with the other six or the lower-tier municipalities as far as, because I think there could be some advantages if we bunch up. Seen, it's not, I'm guessing, that the discussion was had and there was none, but maybe just elaborate that there was discussions?
For sure. We had our, we held a joint tendering meeting in January with all six local townships. All the directors were here. Anyone who was interested in purchasing material is able to jump on board. As far as what was required for these tenders, only South Stormont had this, had the need at that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? One myself. The Finch Chevy Cadillac dealer that's getting the second one isn't in the Finch that I live close to. Is there any extra cost for us to, or those vehicles delivered?
That those prices are including delivery to our shop in Finch. So from Finch to Finch.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? That's everybody carried. Roadside weed spraying, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Laundrie, seconded by Counsel St. Pierre, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the joint tender from Wagler and Corporate Weed Control Incorporated for treatment on municipal road sides and guide rail at their price of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventeen cents plus chemicals and HST. The joint tender includes the following for roadside spraying: United Counties, twelve thousand dollars plus chemicals, including guide rail, ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventeen cents. North Dundas, four thousand, sixty-two dollars, fifty cents plus chemicals. South Dundas, four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents plus chemicals. North Stormont, five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars plus chemicals. South Stormont, three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents plus chemicals. South Glengarry, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents plus chemicals, and that the manager of operations be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
Thank you. Mr. Dahan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with this one, and certainly if there's questions that I can't answer, we've got Mr. Duncan here to help out. So typical, typical tender that we put out every year for roadside weed treatment. The reason it's in front of Council, even though the dollar value is below the threshold required in our purchasing policy, is that we do exclude chemicals from the actual cost. So the cost you're looking at is just for the, for the app, for the driving around and applying the chemicals, and we pay the chemical cost directly based on a published price. And ultimately, like, our, our budget is around the hundred thousand dollar threshold, so we felt best to come to Council, make sure that, from the county's perspective, that Council's approved it. Other than that, it's, again, based on areas that we've assessed and reviewed, where there is the highest weed pressures in agricultural areas, and attempting to support our requirement to treat noxious weeds per the, per the Noxious Weed Act. So happy to answer any questions that Council may have.
Thank you. Counsel McGillis, and then Counsel Williams.
Well, thank you, Warden. Do you still make sure that the public understands what the, what's the date, that we start the spraying, and to make sure that they can put a sign out if they wish not to participate in their front properties?
Through you, Mr. Warden, absolutely. So we, once we award this, then we start the, we're gonna call it the Public Relations Campaign, just to make sure it's out there to the public in terms of how they can put a no, no spray sign up, and, and then identify when we're starting the work, where we're, you know, to the best of our ability, where we're doing the work ahead of the, ahead of the crew. It's so dependent on wind, weather, resources available by the contractor. It's, it's, it's not like we can be perfect in terms of letting the public know exactly where the contractor's expected to be tomorrow or the next day. But I can, I can assure Council, we do our absolute best to make sure that it's, you know, we're putting as much information as we can out there. We're not keeping anything close to our chest.
Thank you. Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly not my favorite topic, but I'm told unnecessary evil. I, I see that, a couple of questions, if I may. I see North Glengarry's not on this list. Is that because we've decided not to spray?
I believe, yes, that's, that is a hundred percent correct. The direction through the director was that there was no spraying in North Glengarry this year. So you'd have to get the clarification. I don't want to misspeak why, why that decision was made, but that's the understanding.
Ah, okay. I guess we'll ask, we'll ask him. And with regards to last summer, were there any, you know, mishaps or complaints by the public in terms of spraying where spraying shouldn't happen, or anything like that?
Yeah, we had one complaint last year in South Glengarry that was dealt with, within the appropriate timelines. And it just came down to, they weren't aware that their road was being sprayed this year, so they weren't able to put out no spraying signs. But in advance of the spray season, as Ben had mentioned, all of those public notices are sent out to the townships for them to post on their websites. We also post all the township maps as to where spraying is occurring, and then also post on our social media platforms the approximate start dates for the spraying, as well as daily updates as to what was sprayed, and where the contractor is anticipating to spray the next day as well, so.
Okay, that's great. If I may, just a follow-up. And do you involve the local townships and their communications in terms of, you know, having the local townships get the word out as well?
Sure, we can, we can look at that option as well.
Okay, that'd be excellent.
And if I may, just a follow-up, we do. And so we do work with the communication staff from local municipalities as well, to make sure that information's up on local websites and things like that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counsel McGillis, and then Counsel Dencham.
Thank you very much, Warden. If North Glengarry does decide to opt back in, is there a time, is there a time to do this at this time?
Yeah, I certainly, we've worked with this contractor for many years in a row now, and they're very, the contractor's very open to, you know, working with us collaboratively. So if there was a change in direction in North Glengarry for this year, I'm confident that they would be, they'd be, they'd be able to participate in the work, for sure.
Thank you. Counsel Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. So thank you for the report. This is just a single application per season? Is that, is that correct? And how many kilometers are covered on this? Do you know what the number of kilometers might be?
Yeah, the total approximate kilometers would be around twenty-three hundred, and it'll be eight hundred and fifty for the, for the counties total. And then I can provide you with the, with the township totals as well.
Okay. And it is just a single application during the season?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We're on to bylaws. Shared services agreement with North Stormont, Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Fraser, seconded by Counsel McDonald, that bylaw number five four eight seven, being a bylaw to authorize a shared services agreement, economic development and communication services with the township of North Stormont, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you, Warden. Attached to this bylaw is a agreement that would govern the type of services that North Stormont would be requesting from the counties. This had go to North Stormont Council last week, and it was supported by their council. Just at a high level, it's some basic communications, website updating, and on the economic development side, it's focusing on the regional incentives plan, community improvement plan, and just kind of a contact that would work with the CAO. We have in the agreement, things like insurance, if either party wants to discontinue, it's all covered in the agreement. And Ms. Castleman, is there anything for communications?
I think you've covered it. It is a full-cost recovery, much like how we implemented the shared services agreement for planning services here at the county. So very similar in nature. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments? Oh, go ahead, Mr. St. Pierre.
Thank you. I guess I was just a little bit curious, as I was reading through the agreement. There's language under number three, the day-to-day management of the agreement. And there's a couple of statements about hiring, oversight, performance, discipline, termination, and allocation of staff resources. I'm just wondering if you can expand on that? And if we're just simply providing communication services, why that would be in the language of the agreement?
Sure. Thank you, through the Warden. And basically, it's that these are county employees. Ultimately, if there's discipline or performance issues, it goes through the director or manager of that department. And obviously, they would get input from the, the CAO or whoever they're working with at the township if the services weren't up to what the township was looking for. So it's just similar to other type of agreements where we're sharing a resource, kind of who does what. So that's still myself and Kimberly that are making sure our staff are meeting their goals and timelines for SDG, and also providing the service that's required by the township.
Thank you. I got Counsel Williams and Counsel Broad.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I mean, it looks like a, a good plan in principle, for sure. Obviously, there's some resources that you need in North Stormont. I, I do always wonder a little bit about capacity, you know, when you start sort of, you know, sharing the employees out, you know, that, that it, you know, could end up, I imagine you're kind of keeping an eye on, on capacity. But when I read through it, it looked like really kind of focusing more on, on some programs that already exist and facilitating those programs. I'm assuming not sort of boots-on-the-ground in North Stormont, knocking on businesses' doors and that kind of thing. Is, is that correct?
That's correct. And if any of the counselors would like to interject as well, I can, they could speak to that. But from our perspective, we're looking at, there's kind of a long list of services that were discussed for possible economic development, and we really focused with myself and the CEO of the township and Maureen on, on what are the key ones that we're able to deliver with our current resources. So it wouldn't be every single item, for sure, just limited to those. Now, it can be adjusted as, you know, depending on workload, but we have these kind of five or six items to focus on in the agreement. Not every bit of economic development. Yeah, we're not doing, I don't know if we would do Meet Me on Main Street in, in Berwick or something like that. It would be, maybe work with the, the other staff and support efforts of, of other North Stormont staff.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Counsel Broad?
No, thank you, thank you, Warden, through you. Quick question. Approximate hours per week expected to work with North Stormont, on an average? Wondering what the expectation is.
So the budget is about, between the two different departments, about five hundred hours, so one-third, so fifteen percent of the week. But that may be a little bit high, too. We just kind of wanted to make sure that, that it was covered financially in North Stormont's budget. But based on what we've been doing so far, I don't think it would be, it would be less than that fifteen percent that's budgeted for. And we didn't budget any revenue, so we just wanted to see how it would go before we budgeted any revenue for that.
Thank you. I have Counsel Dencham, and then Counsel St. Pierre.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, yeah, economic development was the discussion point at our council table. And this is the challenge that we've, we've had, is council isn't sure whether we need a full-time resource. In fact, some, one of our past resources that we had, had suggested that it wasn't a full-time job, and he actually ended it up leaving for what he felt was a, was a better opportunity for, for himself. So my hope is that through some of the activities that will happen here, is that the economic developer that we will have assigned, we'll get to know North Stormont a little bit, and then at some point in a year or two, we'll have a sit-down discussion to say, you know, what does the outlook of economic development look like for North Stormont? And, you know, at some point, it may make sense, once we can define who we are from an economic opportunity perspective, it may make sense for us to flip over back to a full-time. But, but we're kind of in a catch-22. We don't have an economic developer with us long enough with the right expertise to be able to assess our municipality. And so we don't know exactly how to engage a full-time economic developer. And in fact, we may find that we don't need one. So this is, this is a bit of a fact-finding mission while trying to accomplish a few things along the way.
And Counsel St. Pierre, and then Counsel McDonald from South.
Yeah, thank you. And actually, just further to Counsel Dencham, I'd like to see a report come back in about a year on the results, budgetary, and if you think that, you know, the negatives and positives, and how many hours. Because I think that's a tool that I think other municipalities could use as well. And it kind of goes on the same line as, as what we were proposing in terms of the planner and hiring a planner. It would be nice to see if we need to, to grow the county's economic department It would be nice to see if we need to grow the county's economic department to support more municipalities in our, in our community. So I'd like to see that full report as well.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, and to you, Mr. Warden. Something, and it's just from some knowledge of North Dundas, I believe they're hiring a communications at halftime. So that might, I don't know if that's something, because I always think we can maybe solve it locally. I'm not opposed to this. I was curious as to what South Dundas would have to say about it, and they seem to be, as long as the results come back in a year, I'm glad to support it. But it's just sometimes, that's, that could be an option longer term, too, because if you have a halftime employee, make a full-time employee that you share. Just putting that seed out there.
And Counselor Andre.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. So just to add a little bit on to Counselor Dencham's points. So we did, or I guess we do have, a hard time retaining, so to go through two different individuals and sustaining to see what, I have a hard time, maybe my ignorance, but to have the vision of what the EDO would bring to the municipality, which I find, our small municipality, or if we retain the services of the EDO, maybe tied with communication. Right now, we, and our Warden's going to speak on that, we're having discussions, which is a big EDO filing in North Stormont in regards to the landfill site and the potential that's happening there, which is tied to a county initiative as well. So I feel that right now, we are investing as a council in this through the counties, having... Karina, I believe, is in the acting role. I believe Tara's coming in partways this late summer. So I think we're just going to utilize, I think, their expertise right now to hire a third new developer, economic developer in our recent past. It's just very hard to get things moving. So right now, if we can retain their services, see where it can kind of lead us, get their expertise, and then, as he mentioned, maybe in a year, we would look at rethinking our direction on this. But right now, I think that's the best direction that we feel is to get the right person in that spot. So, thank you.
Okay, and I have Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I've been silent unnecessarily so, but this, the economic development portfolio, I think is absolutely necessary, that we all have the opportunity to have an economic developer support us. I find it hard to believe that you may think you may never need an EDO. I know you're, I trust that, that's just a comment. But my belief is that an EDO is absolutely needed, but I do appreciate the avenue you're taking here and the support from the counties on this initiative to, as you say, the fellows from North Stormont, to figure out where you're at and what you need. I think this is the best opportunity, and I appreciate the counties being able to help out in that manner. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Are we ready? All those in favor? It's carried. We're on to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Dencham, seconded by Counselor Broad, that all items listed under the consent agenda section of the agenda be received for information purposes.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or concerns on consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone carried. Thank you. Boards and committees, Warden's report, a couple of things was not too, too crazy in the last month. Just comment that Marine and I went down to Franklin County in the States, went down to Malone and met with Chair Edward Lockwood and the CEO down there, Donna Kissin. Productive meeting, I think. They're very understanding of where we are and the tariff issue, and they're very concerned, worried about the fact that we're likely not going to be coming down as often as we used to, either for skiing, golf, the golf course in Malone, I had just met with them the day before, concerned that about 40% of their business is Canadians coming down, this sort of thing. If you lose 40%, your profits are likely long gone. So supportive, but, you know, not the one making the decision in the White House. So anyway, I think it's good. We're keeping the lines of communication open, and I know that a lot of the mayors are doing the same thing. So I think it's, it's good to continue on doing that. On Friday, I joined North Stormont, as Counselor Andre had said. We went to Drummondville, did a tour of a large greenhouse facility, De Maire's, very professional, well-run. It was kind of interesting to see all of us big fellows in white jumpsuits and... Anyway, hopefully that picture doesn't get out too far, but... But it was very, very, very interesting and potential in North Stormont in, you know, conjunction with landfill and the natural gas and the gas that they have there to heat greenhouses and what it could do for this end of the province. It would be, it would be quite amazing to see it get going. So we'll see where that gets going. And I'd like to thank North Stormont for the invitation and as well as Peter and Stephanie joined us as well. So it's quite an interesting tour. Enough for me there. Joint Liaison Committee, I think Mr. Fraser was going to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The Joint Liaison Committee was held towards the end of February at Cornwall City Hall in the Cornwall Chambers, where they will be held for the balance of 2025. That'll be the location for the meetings, and at that meeting, Counselor Dennis Sabran was elected the chair for this year. And we also had the opportunity to welcome Cornwall's new CAO, Mr. Tim Mills. And we received the draft shared services agreement with the addition of Glen Stor Dun Lodge. And there was a presentation on end-of-mortgage for housing providers. And if we have any questions of me, I'm going to refer the questions over to Counselor McDonald to answer them, but I do appreciate the note. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? And then Library Board, who would like to speak? Counselor Broad?
Sure, I'll go ahead. We met in the beautiful villages of Williamsburg in February. And we started off our meeting with sharing our Q and As on the book we read. So the board are now in a book club, and we're reading, reading a book monthly or every couple of months and sharing our thoughts on the book. Promote reading and SDNG, and I most recently participated in a reading event at York Public School, and I continue to advocate for that. I know Mayor Fraser continues to talk about us out in the community reading. Somewhat uneventful meeting, but we did go through our IT technology plan. We have a complete inventory of all the IT equipment in our 15 branches, so we can start to have an asset management plan against those items. So that's great for us from a budgeting standpoint. And of course, North Stormont is the host of our Maker Lab, and we received the 2025 Maker Lab report for us to continue to share that equipment throughout SDNG and continue to grow that type of technology for use for all our residents. And lastly, I'd like to thank North Glengarry for supporting Rebecca Luck and her delegation last week. They had a big crowd out, so I appreciate, appreciate your support to the Library Board. Thank you. Oh, yes, and the last thing, thanks to, thank you, Mayor Counselor Fraser. We also celebrated the Friends of the Williamsburg Library. We had a large group, the Friends of the Library in Williamsburg is a large group, and we celebrated their 10-year anniversary of, as a group. So they are instrumental in preview councils, councils of restoring the Williamsburg Library, and it's quite successful now. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody, any questions? No. Police Services Board, maybe I'll do that, because it used to be Counselor McGillis, but I think with airlines, the way they were, he was not able to get back in time for the meeting. Not too much. We received the reports for January, February. There was nothing, no trends that were too concerning. We approved $4,986 from the community initiatives budget for cultural awareness training, as well as wellness nights for members and their families and to hear presenters and to kind of help people, you know, with, with mental health and this sort of thing and get people communicating. So I think well, well-thought-out ways to spend that money. We were updated on our security alarm bylaw, just to reflect the new legislation, and there was a few changes in the preamble. So that was about the end for that meeting. No questions? No. On to Health Unit?
A meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Glen Stor Dun Lodge?
No meeting in February. Next meeting is Wednesday.
Okay. St. Lawrence River Institute, Andrew's not here. Raisin, South Nation Source Protection, don't see Teresa. Municipal Advisory, Tony? No. Regional Incentives Program? Counselor, Desam?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, so good news, the Regional Incentive Program has received a lot of applicants. So we have about 464,000 submissions or dollars worth of... $464,000 worth of submissions, 15 submissions, I think it is. Yeah, exactly. And so, and we have a budget of about $250,000, so we're going to have to do some serious review to look for the biggest opportunities. Our meeting is March the 25th, and Karina did a fabulous job packaging all the information and equipping us to be able to make some, some good decisions on that date.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Counselor Andre.
Just out of curiosity, through you, Mr. Warden, is there any, because I know every year there is unused funds from the previous R and P, is there some amounts that are carried for, carried over to this year's?
Peter, maybe can answer?
No, I can answer that. We talked about that at budget time, and we didn't carry over any funds.
I believe that's correct, yes. Any other questions? None. Real Education, Quinny?
Yeah, yeah, just real quickly, at a meeting on February 25th, the meeting was to discuss submitting a delegation request at the upcoming Roma Conference, sorry, Good Roads Conference. I believe we did submit that, but we're still waiting response.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. Social Development, Counselor Williams? This week? All right, Works for Working Group with myself have not had a meeting. Borders, Mayor's Alliance, Mr. Broad.
Yeah, thank you. We continue to, now we meet weekly, continue to advocate with our cross-border mayors. I know Justin Townsdale here in the city of Cornwall, he actually got a chance to meet with the representative of New York State, continue the conversations in that way. From a strategic point, the mayors across Canada, we're going to break into zone working groups, so all across the St. Lawrence Seaway, break into working groups and continue to think about how we can advocate our own government, provincially and federally, for, you know, the proper responses and/or funding that our municipalities may need. So that's kind of work to come here in the next few weeks. We obviously get daily updates, as we probably all do, on the tariff situation that continues to be a challenge.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Broad? No. We are on to Key Information, 2025 Road Tour.
Thank you. So the purpose of this report is just to gauge council's interest in a spring road tour. Unfortunately, you're not going to see my pretty face on that road tour. But, you know, my suggestion to council, if I could be so bold, is to suggest deferring it till the fall. Let a new director come in, kind of get their feet underneath them, and then be at a point where things like County Road 22 would be all done. A lot of the big bridge work we're doing this year would be all done, and then actually provide council with an opportunity to look at the stuff that is going to be included in the 2026 budget. So that'd be my suggestion, but certainly we've got the expertise with the staff that'll be here during the normal time that we have the road tour to host council. So completely up to council, and I'll leave it, I'll leave it up to the direction I get.
Thank you. Thoughts or comments for, go ahead, Counselor McDonald.
I agree with the recommendation. I think it's good to go out prior to budget time anyways and get to see what we're, what we're approving. So, and plus, with him not there, we probably won't have to go to South Dundas, so I'm out for that. So, thank you.
Can I get kind of a nod from most people? Yeah, I'm getting the nod. Something you'd like to add to that, Counselor? Okay, all right, it looks like we have the majority by far, our agreement. So we will do that. Second one, Road Rationalization Study. Mr. Hahn, again?
Thank you, and I'm sneaking this one in just because I want to make sure that it's on council's radar or out in the public. We're trying to do our best to get that information out there. We do have an open house this week on Wednesday, 19th, is that Wednesday? I'm kind of losing track of dates here. Wednesday? Yeah, getting a nod. So Wednesday, we're, we're in increment at the Civita office. They've graciously offered their offices to host this, so it's just drop-in. We'll have some boards available and staff from the counties, as well as the contractor, there to answer any questions that may come up. I'm anxious to see how busy it is, so I know, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Mayor Fraser, that you'll be there. And Counselor Annabelle? Oh, yeah. We got two people at least, that's great. So we'll look forward to it, and of course, welcome any other council members that may be interested. On to the reason for this report, so the Road Rationalization Study. After we presented this to council last, or a couple of months ago, our direction was to go visit local municipalities, have those discussions with local municipalities, come back and present to council in terms of what next steps may be. So this is what this report is all about. And so I do want to thank the Warden and the CAO Adams for attending many of these meetings across the region. While it was being presented, it was good to have some cover, as I presented and ran, ran out of there. Just a reminder for council, what the conclusions of the study were, there is a number, we looked at a number of roadways, but there were a few that we had recommended as reclassification to, that would be suited to reclassify as a local roadway. And then some, some suggestions in terms of some engineering options and connecting link solutions for some of our urban downtown areas in, I would call it the more, the older, the older developed villages. So very briefly, what I'll do, I'll go through with council, kind of the summary of what came out of the meetings with local municipalities. So North Stormont had a really good discussion with council. I would say that my conclusions are the conclusions that were reached based on our discussions with council. It's really the, is one of the things we presented to North Stormont Council was the opportunity for realignment alternatives on Finchrocksboro Boundary Road to make use of some of the county infrastructure that exists there already. My takeaway from that meeting was that there wasn't necessarily deemed a priority by North Stormont Council. They are, and not, certainly I can appreciate the perspective. They view the current alignment location of Finchrocksboro Boundary Road as superior and certainly would prefer to see counties' involvement in jurisdictional transfer of that entire alignment of the roadway. South Dundas, very receptive to a transfer of County Road 40, which is also known as Stanful Road. And that was, I'm going to use the caveat, which was expressed multiple times, whenever we talked about county roads realigning to a local roadway, it doesn't create undue budgetary pressure, which is a fair and appropriate comment. So what, what we're going to do with South Dundas, work with them to evaluate the roadway, get a better understanding of its condition, some of the liabilities that are associated with that roadway, and allow that to be input into South Dundas's asset management plan, just so that they can have a better perspective of what this means, not only on day one, when, when that road may be transferred, but going down the, going down the road, as they say, overall. North Dundas, a lot of our discussion actually focused on a road, a Liskum Road, which I think council is well familiar with. North Dundas supported, I would suggest, there was support for the study. But again, you know, the financial concerns with taking over new roadways were, were top of mind, for sure. And we had hit North Dundas on a, on a budget meeting, so of course, that was very much top of mind when we were, when we were there chatting with them. But there is definitely a desire, and I support this as well, and I would continue to support county council to have this discussion with North Dundas, work with North Dundas to improve Liskum Road, and then look at how that, how that would fit in the county system relative to other roads in that area. North Glengarry, I would suggest that the big discussion we had in North Glengarry was actually about County Road 21 and looking to the county to prioritize the realignment of 21, because there's a lot of pressure on McCormick Road, which is just south of County Road 21. And that's kind of, I would suggest, from the northeast portion of the municipality to get into Alexandria, that's being used as the main road in, where 21 is somewhat of an alternative. Right now, 21's a very disjointed roadway, and perhaps by looking at ways to smooth that out and create more continuous, a more continuous road, that may take some of the pressure off McCormick Road, and then the township similarly can look at ways to discourage through traffic on McCormick Road. So things like lowered speed limits, potentially some introduction of some other, other engineering measures to slow down traffic through that. The other thing I will say about North Glengarry, and it makes sense, because I would suggest this is probably the municipality where the connecting links opportunity has the greatest opportunity. They were, we had a good discussion about that, too, and I would suggest that they were very much in favor of, you know, developing that a little bit further. And just for council's recollection, the connecting links idea was actually a way to unwind some of the county's decision-making in some of the downtown cores and provide more autonomy to local municipalities, as long as the function of the roadway isn't being interrupted. of the roadway isn't being interrupted. South Glengarry, lots of good discussion with South Glengarry. Some of the things that were discussed was, even though County Road 26 has low volumes, there was some questions from their municipality and council. What type of traffic is on 26? Is it agricultural? Like, even though there's maybe low commercial and vehicle traffic, you know, the suspicion is there's a lot of agricultural traffic, and it's an important agricultural corridor. So looking to want to have a better understanding of what that looks like. Certainly, the sentiment was that County Road 17 between Williamstown to County Road 27 should remain as a county roadway. And South Service Road, although this study deemed it appropriate as a local roadway, the comments received through that council was that it's, it's a very good EDR alternative, and perhaps, even though we do have County Road 2, which is just north of the 401, as an EDR alternative, look at South Service Road as, as maybe a one direction. Maybe that's the westbound EDR versus 2 on the north side becomes the eastbound EDR, or vice versa, or, excuse me, I'm, I'm saying that the wrong way, but, or vice versa, so that, you know, maybe look at that a little bit closer. There's a desire to look at that a little bit closer. Title Town and Ray Road, which are very busy roads for South Glengarry, they do see that as collectors and well-suited to be county roadways. I would suggest my takeaway from that meeting, and, and of course, I'm happy to be corrected if I'm, if I, my takeaway is incorrect, but there is a preference to see more of an exchange of roadways rather than jurisdictional transfers. And some questions and discussion about county road standards, and if there had been any discussion around the county council table, to look at different standards for lower volume roadways. And because, as council may recall, some of this is about the investments we're putting into roadways, you know, to maintain it to a county level, whenever it may not be well-suited as a county roadway. So perhaps an alternative thought process would be to look at a lower standard for some of these county roads, like County Road 26. So ultimately, the takeaway from the meeting with South Glengarry was that there were concerns about taking on the additional roadways and that financial burden, and that seemed like there may be a discussion at a future committee of the whole meeting with, with that council, just to have more in-depth discussion. South Stormont, which was the last municipality we visited as part of the tour, was actually, at that meeting, South Stormont requested through a formal resolution, the transfer of County Road 36 between County Road 2 and County Road 15. There's a lot of development pressure on that roadway, and so they are prepared to take that roadway on, subject to, again, going through and making sure there's a fair cost-sharing arrangement put in place. But they're prepared to do that, and this is, again, not only subject to a fair cost-sharing arrangement, but also to the formal commitment of Long Sioux Logistics Village Road, when it does get developed, which is the road between Mullenette and County Road 15, going through the new logistics village that's going to be built in Long Sioux, that the county takes that over, which is something we've talked around this council table, and there is a commitment and desire to do that. So very reasonable request from South Stormont, and I, and I think a lot of opportunity there to work with them. So what I'm suggesting to council in terms of next steps is updating the report and include the following in the report, just summarize, briefly summarize the major takeaways from the meetings with the local municipalities, and then just highlight, really, the continued need to work collaboratively on this study. I don't think, you know, my sentiment, working with this council and previous councils, is there's never a desire to force anything on any municipality that they don't want. We want to work together with municipalities. So make sure we, we definitely highlight that, because there's, I would suggest, where South Stormont's in a position to move forward quickly, I would suggest with South Glengarry as an example, a lot more discussion needs to take place before there's any commitments one way or the other. So I think that's completely fair, and, and, you know, want to make sure we kind of recognize that in the report. I suggest as well is putting together some kind of conceptual framework from a financial perspective on how we look through these jurisdictional transfers, and it needs to recognize the fiscal limitations of local municipalities. Like, we can't, I don't think it's, you know, I've, the experience I had in North Dundas and, and just my time here at the counties, I can appreciate very much that. I don't think it's fair to expect that North Stormont's going to build Finchroxburrow Boundary Road to a county road standard, and we kind of sit back and wait for that to happen, because if the county waits for that to happen, it's never going to happen. So we've got to figure out a way to do this in a fair way. And then just, you know, the direction to work with municipalities that are ready to prioritize some of these jurisdictional transfers and make that the priority. And then we'll work through the rest of them as, as time goes on, depending on how that plays out, and making sure, you know, specifically for South Stormont, recognizing the assumption of the new Long Sioux logistical village, just, and I can appreciate there, there's a, there's a peace of mind that's associated with that, as they potentially take on post-road as a local roadway. And so my suggestion, again, again, subject to council's input, but update the report based on that, and then go back to the Public Works Directors, that working group that we had formed, make sure they're satisfied with, with the updates, and then come back to county council for final approval, and then start working through this, the actual action items. So that's my report, and happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Han. I have Mr. McGillis with a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you very much for attending the meeting, Ben, and our CAO, and I'm Warden. Council voted unanimously to make this transfer, because there's a lot of the interest in the community, because of the amount of residential growth that we're experiencing along that corridor. And we do want to make those changes, the necessary changes to make it safer for the community there. But I think it's a great fit for us, and we're looking forward to that transition, and hopefully council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McGillis. I'll get it yet. Any further comments or questions? Councilor Broad?
Yeah, thank you, Director Han, for the presentation. Thanks for attending South Dundas as well. Appreciate it. I think one of the interesting things, more as a comment, not a question, will be going forward, when we look at the asset management plans, overall in the, in the SDNG, taking on some county roads, and then, which is a higher maintenance status, but lowering some others, which is the lower, and how that affects the overall budgeting atmosphere each individually municipality, and then at the county level. So, and I know Director Don has on the list to take a look at that, that plan. So looking forward to more details on that side.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nothing common on ourself, thank you for understanding that maybe it'd take a little time in South Glengarry, because 17 kilometers to take over with possibility of three major structures would definitely hit our budget bottom line. So we will be looking forward to some more continued conversations. I forget, I turned off the microphone, because it helps me hear better. But we're on to the Visitor's Guide. Thank you. And it looks like it's going to be Peter.
Thank you, Warden. Corey Higgins, our Acting Tourism Coordinator, and just going to give you a quick update on the Visitor Guide and the package you had on your desk this morning.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Warden. SDG Tourism, in partnership with Cornwall Tourism, have successfully produced and released the 2025 edition of the Cornwall and SDG Counties Visitor Guide. This collaborative initiative builds upon the success of the 2024 Visitor Guide, and was once again written and designed by Big Catch Communications and Mariner Design. The guide serves as a comprehensive marketing and storytelling tool to promote local tourism by highlighting attractions, accommodations, dining establishments, outdoor recreation, and cultural experiences available in the area. The primary objective is to increase regional tourism by providing a visually appealing, informative, and accessible publication that showcases the diverse offerings of SDG Counties and the City of Cornwall. A total of 60,000 visitor guides have been printed. With SDG Tourism and Cornwall Tourism respectively receiving 17,500 guides each, the 25,000 remaining visitor guides will be distributed amongst corridors in Ontario and New York State. Both organizations will be distributing the guide at local and regional tourism events, trade shows, businesses, and attractions within the region. The digital version will be promoted through our official websites to maximize visibility. Consolidating our efforts into one guide has enabled us to pool all of our resources, share the production costs, and streamline the printing process, which has resulted in more copies being printed and distributed. The total cost of design, printing, and distribution was approximately 135,000, split evenly between our two organizations. The total revenue for advertising in the Visitor Guide was just over 31,000. The guide supports local businesses and tourism operators by providing them with advertising and exposure opportunities, thereby contributing to the regional economy. By working collaboratively, SDG Counties and Cornwall Tourism have been able to enhance marketing reach and create a unified regional approach that aligns with our long-term strategic goals. And if I may, Mr. Warden, just to provide a final thought in relation to the report provided. As we continue to promote and grow tourism within our region, it's more important than ever to support our local tourism operators, especially given the current political rift with our southern neighbors. These economic pressures highlight the need to strengthen domestic tourism and encourage visitors to explore and invest in experiences within SDG Counties. By continuing to support and promote our local businesses, attractions, hospitality providers, we ensure that our tourism sector remains resilient and competitive. The success of initiatives like the SDG Counties and Cornwall Visitor Guide is a testament to what we can achieve when we work together to enhance regional tourism. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Thank you very much for our copy. We all received one this morning in our package.
Absolutely.
Questions, comments? It's very good to see that they're out there, and glad to see us work with. Oh, Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment on the collaborative relationship with City of Cornwall on this. I'm all in favor of partnerships, and I think it's, I, I'm glad to see that we've come back to this, this, this partnership in tourism and on this particular package. I think it's
Absolutely.
the right way to go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And through the Warden, I can quickly just speak to some of the numbers. Prior to this, our costs together, our, our cost for SDG is 65,000. It was 78,000 before we partnered with Cornwall. We used to do 40,000 copies. Now that we partner with Cornwall, we're doing 60,000 copies. Our revenue's gone from 23,000 to 31,000. So revenue's gone up, expenses for the county directly have gone down, and our reach has gone up 50%. So it's been our, we're really happy how it's been working.
It went all the way around. Further comments? See none? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're on to Administrative Update. Ms. Adams?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Just a brief update, showing a little bit of my schedule from last month. Just want to highlight the Good Roads Conference from March 30th to April the 2nd, and remind everybody that we have the Warden's Golf Tournament planned for May 23rd, Friday, at the Cornwall Golf and Country Club. It'll be a 1:00 PM shotgun with a dinner as well. So we're hoping to see everybody submit a team and be part of that. We are currently going through some ongoing recruitments. We have a new director that we'll, we're currently recruiting for, but that process is underway. I think one additional item that I just wanted to mention to council is, I've had multiple meetings with the CAO from the City of Cornwall, Tim Mills. Tim and I have worked very closely together over the last number of years. So with respect to shared services, I'm, I'm fully confident that we will have a very productive relationship. The Shared Services Agreement will be brought forward to our, both of our county, both of our councils, likely in the April meetings. And it was a really good addition, I think, to have the Glen Stor-Dun Lodge kind of be brought into that portfolio. And speaking of the Glen Stor-Dun Lodge, there has been a little bit of change in staffing at the senior level. So as many are aware, Mina Mueller is now going to be the incoming CAO for North Dundas. So looking forward to working with Mina. But we're hoping this morning we'll have a announcement to the change of the administrator and the deputy administrator at the Glen Stor-Dun Lodge. So there'll be a communication that comes out this morning, and the City of Cornwall and the counties will jointly release some of those communications. So I view this as a very positive working relationship moving forward, and I know that it will continue. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilor Broad?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the CAO and, and the entire team that supported Kristen Summers in the recruiting of our CAO, and I know North Dundas the same, and she did an excellent job. So I just wanted to pass that on to thank her, and thank yourselves for supporting those exercises.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you for the report, and we are, nothing, we're under ratification by law, Council, Madam Clark?
It's moved by Councilor St. Pierre, seconded by Councilor Fraser. The bylaw number 5488, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
All those in favor? It's carried. Adjournment?
It's moved by Councilor Broad, seconded by Councilor Dencham, that council adjourned to the call of the chair.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much, everyone.